I can't hear this.
Better? Nope. Oh, turn down your volume.
Hear us?
Can anybody hear us?
Yes.
Your laptop maybe? No, that's not, it's, it's, it's...
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, we're not getting a lot of feedback, so that's probably all right.
I can't make it go any...
No.
It's that one bar.
It's, it's on mute now. Okay.
Okay, can everybody hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
All righty. Thank you. I just made a, I just read the consent calendar with the minutes, a list of claims in Resolution number 21-09. We had Councilwoman King make a motion to approve, and Councilmember Lewis seconded the motion. So, Linda, roll call.
Okay, Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrusik.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye. Thank you. Any presentations tonight?
No presentations.
Okay, then we move on to public hearings. We have Resolution number 21-07, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California regarding the commitments and publishing the report required by Central Coast Water Authority, Resolution numbers 92-02 and 92-11. Would that be you, Mr. Wolf?
That would be me, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Our Public Works Director is out this evening, so I will take care of this really quick. This is a fairly straightforward item. The item before you this evening addresses a requirement that the city has in order to comply with requirements of the Central Coast Water Authority in terms of providing a written report every year. The report is attached to the staff report. This is a public hearing, as is required, so the City Council should consider the report, take public test, or, excuse me, take public testimony, consider the report, and then if you deem it appropriate to file this with CCWA, go ahead and approve the resolution as it's presented. If you have any technical questions on this tonight, I am not the person to answer these questions. So I would recommend, if there are technical questions, that the City Council consider continuing this item until the next meeting, so that our Public Works Director can be here to answer them. However, in the absence of any technical questions, staff recommends that you approve the resolution and authorize the filing of the report with CCWA.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Will this come out in the water bill? Or will this just be published on the...
This will be published on the city's website. The, the resolution will be the report, yes, I believe will be published on the city's website. There may be a link to it in the water bill.
Okay.
But it's a sizable report, so...
Yeah. It was, it's a good report. It's actually a really interesting report.
Yes.
Okay, if there are no questions, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All righty, closing it to the public, bringing it back to council. So, to consider the adoption of Resolution 2107?
Yeah, I move we approve Resolution number 2107 as written.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second, Linda?
Okay, Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrusik.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number five, public hearing to receive input from the community regarding the creation of a district-based election system. Linda?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. And... And, okay, as you know, in 2018, the City Council adopted a resolution to transition from at-large to district-based elections for two council seats beginning November 2022. According to Elections Code Section 110, before any boundary maps are drawn, the city must conduct two public hearings over a period of 30 days, inviting the public to participate in how the districts are drawn. Staff published a notice regarding the public hearing, mailed a notice to all water customers, and created a dedicated district webpage on the city's website. Our next, next public hearing is scheduled for July 8th to seek public input regarding the process timeline, criteria for drawing districts, mapping tools, and participation kits. These two public hearings are in advance of the census data being released in September or October, which will lead us into the last two public hearings in January and February of 2022, and adoption of an ordinance in March of 2022. Tonight, our consultants, Daniel Phillips and Doug Johnson from National Demographics Corporation, are here with us tonight and will walk us through how we'll proceed in drafting the district maps. Following his presentation, the council will receive public input and approve the transition timeline. So that concludes my report, and Daniel Phillips is now going to share the screen and describe how the redistricting process will move forward.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, and happy to be with you all tonight. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen and, uh, share with you a presentation that we, uh, produced for tonight's public hearing. So, um, it is an introduction to districting and this process that your city will be going through. So first, just a little background on three common election systems that are used for city councils. The first, and the one that your city has used up to this point, is the at-large system, where voters across the city vote for their city council members. There are no, uh, election areas, per se. Uh, the second system does have election areas or districts, but the only requirement is that a city council member has to live in a certain area, but they can still be voted on by citizens throughout the city. But the third system, and the one that you will be moving toward, is the by-district system, where you have these city council districts, and the candidates have to live in a certain district and can only be voted on by residents of that district. And so the California Voting Rights Act was written to specifically encourage this third system, these, uh, by-district elections. And so the, the, the thrust of this legislation is that it basically makes it much more easier to be held liable for a civil rights violation or prove, it's now easier to prove racially polarized voting because it eliminated two of the traditional tests that the Supreme Court established for, for approving racially polarized voting. It eliminated this first one and this fourth one. So it's a, it's, the thrust of it is that it's forcing a lot of jurisdictions like yourself to switch to this new by-district system in order to avoid litigation. And you can see the many jurisdictions throughout the state that have transitioned very recently. And you can see the vast amounts of money that have been spent by jurisdictions that have been sued for not having by-district elections and the large settlement amounts. And so this is the reason why so many jurisdictions like yourself are, are doing this, is to avoid having to, uh, be held for these, uh, these types of fees. So this is the process that you'll be undergoing as you transition to by-district elections. Like Ms. Reed said, there are four required public hearings that must be held. The first is tonight, and the second will be July 8th. These first two have to be held prior to the release of any draft maps, which is why we can have these before any census data comes in. So these hearings are to educate on the process and also to gather input from the public and members of council about what the relevant neighborhoods and communities of interest within the city might be. And I will talk a little bit more about what this term "communities of interest" means a little later on. But once that census data does come in, which we imagine will be late September-ish, we'll, uh, we'll then be able to officially draw maps. Now, members of the public can draw maps before that using estimated data that we've made available, but we, as the demographers in the city, cannot draw official maps until that census data comes in. So once that census data comes in, then those maps will be posted, along with any public submissions we get, and then they'll be released and posted to the project website by January 20th. Then there will be two hearings on, uh, that consider the different mapping options. Those will be on the 27th of January and February 24th. And finally, the council will choose a map and formally adopt it on March the 10th. Now, in this process, there are certain rules and goals that, um, in the case of rules have to be followed, and in the case of goals, may be followed by your jurisdiction. Uh, first, we have federal laws, the most important of which is that these districts have to have roughly equal population. Now, there is some wiggle room. We have, uh, there is a allowance to go a little bit above or a little bit below the ideal population amount, but it, it, they do have to be pretty close to equal. This, uh, the other important federal law is to follow the Federal Voting Rights Act. And the main thrust here is that you do not want to dilute the vote of any protected class, um, community. So protected classes are those that have been historically marginalized or discriminated against. And so any of those minority communities will have to be, um, not have their vote diluted. And, but, uh, the flip side of that is we cannot have racial gerrymandering, which means making race or ethnicity the paramount consideration. It, it should be a consideration, but it can't be the consideration. After we make sure we follow the federal laws, then we have to make sure to follow California law. And the first, and it's actually a ranked order of, uh, criteria. So you, if you follow one, then two, then three, and then four. So if, uh, if it's, you may not be able to follow all four. So if you can't make the districts compact because you're following one, two, and three, that may have to be the case. So the first is that the districts are contiguous, which means they are one piece, not disconnected pieces. Second is the district should, to the extent possible, not divide neighborhoods and communities of interest, which are socioeconomic geographic areas that should be kept together. Number three, uh, they, they should have easily identifiable boundaries, such as roads and, uh, freeway, rivers, et cetera. Number four, um, to the extent practical, they should be compact in that they do not bypass one group of people to get to a more distant group of people. And then there is a prohibition that you shall not favor or discriminate against a political party when you're drawing these lines. And then after you, uh, have made sure that you're following the federal and state laws, then you can consider other traditional districting principles, one of which is respecting voters' choices slash, uh, continuity in office. And the basic idea here is you may want to make sure that incumbent council members are kept in separate districts so that they are not forced out of the council because of, uh, the way the lines are drawn, but leave it to the voters to decide whether they deserve another term. And another traditional districting principle is to consider future population growth. So if you're anticipating a big housing development on the horizon, you can purposefully under-populate a certain district as long as you don't stray too far away from this equal population principle. And so that, that could be an option to consider. So there's a lot of information that I've, uh, gone through here, so I just want to pause and give you an opportunity to, uh, ask any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, sir. Any questions from council? No. All righty. Oh, Councilman King?
No, let's just move my mic.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. We're good. Keep going.
Okay. So here is a demographic summary of your city. Now, in 2010, the census said that you have, you had 48, 28 people living in your city. And with 2020, like I said, we don't have the official census data, but we have a good reason to believe that, according to our estimates, the population is about 4,979. Now, the racial/ethnic breakdown is that 63% of the population is non-Hispanic white and 30% are Hispanic, and then you have a small proportions of other groups. But we also want to consider what is called citizen voting age population, or CVAP. That is because in order to satisfy the requirements of the Federal Voting Rights Act, the courts have decreed that this is the main data point that we use in order to, to do that. We want to look at the voting eligible population by race or ethnicity and try to see where certain, um, races or ethnicities among this population concentrate. So if we just look at that, we see that there's a higher proportion of non-Hispanic whites and about a fifth of that population is Hispanic. So the, the main takeaway here is that each of the districts must contain about 1,200 people in a four-district map with an at-large mayor. Here are, and here's a more detailed breakdown of the demographics. So you can see age, language spoken at home, and, uh, household income. So you see that, uh, a majority of the population has an income greater than $75,000 per year. And the vast majority of the population lives in single-family housing, and most live in, uh, most own the house that they live in. This map shows the Latino CVAP concentrations. So if you, uh, look at the legend in the bottom right, you can see what the colors signify. But the, the main idea here is that the warmer the color, the higher the percentage. So if we see reds and yellows, that's where there's a higher percentage of Latinos who are eligible to vote. And so we see that they tend to be concentrated along Highway 101 and the Avenue of the Flags. This, uh, this block here is mostly, as you'll see on the next map, uh, commercial industrial. There isn't a lot of people living there. So most of the Latino population is to be found in this general vicinity. There are no concentrations of African-American, Asian-American, or Native American, uh, groups that are significant. So this brings us to the slide about defining neighborhoods because the law requires that we keep neighborhoods together to the extent possible. So the first question is, what is your neighborhood? And the second is, what are its geographic boundaries? And so you see here examples of, uh, physical features that might define a neighborhood boundary, like, uh, natural dividing lines, areas around parks or schools, and other neighborhood landmarks. So we hope tonight to get some public testimony about what the relevant neighborhoods are, but in the absence of that, we can look at planning records and other similar documents to try to get at that. Uh, looking beyond neighborhoods, we go back to this term "communities of interest." And so when we're talking about communities of interest, we're talking about a geographic area that has a shared issue or characteristic. So the characteristic could be the language you speak, or the type of house you live in, or the job you have, or your age. But, uh, the issues would be things that could be impacted by city policies. So this is what we're, we're also looking for is these, uh, these testimonies about what your community of interest might be. Uh, the second question is, would this, uh, community of interest benefit from being included within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation? Or would it benefit more from having multiple representatives? The law only requires that we keep communities of interest intact in one district if, if it actually agrees that it should be kept intact in one district. But, uh, crucially, definitions may not include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. This map shows the zoning breakdown of your city. And you can see that the central part along Highway 101 is, uh, mostly commercial. You do have, uh, industrial areas in the corners, but where most of the people live are the residential areas. So the ones that, uh, show up in beige and brown. So single-family residential would be over here. You have an eastern part and then a western part. And then you have multifamily residential in the orange. And then a mobile home park or two. You also have a newer development on the southwest here. Now, we do have, uh, public mapping and map review tools that are available and that, uh, citizens and members of the public can use to draw their own maps or submit their, your neighborhoods for consideration. So you have, uh, many options here, which I'll go through. The first one is just a simple map reveal tool, which will be used to display the maps that people come up with, so that it's all, uh, presented on one common platform. And you will see that, uh, this is just for reviewing maps that have already been made, not to create them. So this is a sample of what it looks like from the city of Lake Forest. For those who would prefer to use, um, paper maps and are not as digitally savvy or are just prefer it like this, we could provide something that looks like this, which is an outline of the city with the streets and all that. And then we break it up into these small little units, show the population within each one. And then you, that will allow someone to draw their own districts on this piece of paper, and they can add up the totals to see how many people live in each district to make sure they're close to population balanced. You can also supplement a paper map with an Excel toolkit, so you can have Excel do the math for you. And you can use the numbers that show up on the paper map in order to plug it in into Excel, and Excel will tell you how well population-balanced your mapping plan is. And finally, we have an online tool called District R, which you can use to either draw your neighborhood or community of interest or draw a, uh, a whole district plan with the, the four districts. This tool is only available in English, but it's very simple to use. It's essentially a paintbrush tool where you color in different city blocks until you have either finished drawing your neighborhood or you draw one district, and then you draw another, and, and then go on from there. There's also an eraser tool that you can use if you want to fix a mistake or, or change something you already drew. So it's, uh, very easy to use, and it comes with different demographic variables like, uh, or certain erasers, or ethnicities, or, or living. So this is the last slide here. So this is the last slide here. Just to finish off, a few questions to pose to the council and members of the public. What is your neighborhood and what are its boundaries? What other notable areas are in the city and what are their boundaries? And we can also answer any questions about the mapping tools. So thank you for listening and looking forward to your questions.
Thank you very much. Questions for Mr. Phillips or Mr. Johnson? No? I guess my question before I open it up for public input is, if our residents are interested in setting up, creating their own district maps, how do they get these maps? Will they be able to go online and and Google District R? Or will the city have something on its website so our residents can can get out there coloring their crayons and and mark up the the city into districts?
Yes. Mr. Johnson, would you like to answer that question?
Sure. Yeah, so some of you may have already visited the city website. The city's already got a fairly extensive page up about this process. So once we get these tools ready in there, they're being set up now, those links will simply go on that website.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, no more questions from council members. I'm going to open it up for a public hearing, receive any public input. Do we have, I don't have anything from emails earlier. Lynda, do we have any public input?
We do not.
Nothing? Okay. Then I'm closing the public hearing for now. It'll be back next month.
July 8.
July 8. Council members, it's important that we get out into the community and let people know about this, so.
I have a question.
Please, Vice Mayor.
If you're, are we just going to split it up by population? If you just, I mean, if you went from from west to east, and you went by 1,200 and then kind of drew a vague line, and then another 1,200, another, you know, figure line, and then another 1,200? If you just went by population? I mean, that's how I envision geographical split up. Was there more to it? I mean, is is that an easy way to do it? Or is that, do we have to go to further?
So there's there's a bit more to it, a bit of which Mr. Phillips began touching on today. We have a fairly compact Latino/Latina community that is congregates sort of around central. And given the nature of the CVRA complaint or letter that we received threatening a lawsuit, the ability to sort of tie that group as a single district rather than divide it up is somewhat important in this process. It's not the sole concern. As Mr. Phillips said, we won't gerrymander to keep that population together, but certainly keeping them together is consistent with both federal law and state law. So what what the NDC will do is set up a number of maps based on public input, based on input from the council, what they're getting online, other things, number of maps to bring back, not in July, but when we sort of come back for the second set of hearings, so that the council can look at what your options are. One option, as you said, sir, is very simple, just sort of slice it straight north-south and be done with it. But because of some of the other interests, we want to do, we do want to give some options. And I can, I'm happy to speak with you or with any of the five of you, sort of offline about this as well.
We could put a, and we could theoretically make a map of that, just to to see what it would look like. And then if it's possible, the central section will be in one district. And I'm just thinking, be easy, maybe just drew the line north to south-ish. I mean, it's going to have to change a little bit for numbers.
Yeah, and even with that being as probably as straightforward an answer as any, California law still requires us to have the four hearings to go through the process. So that's part of what we're doing, is making sure that we comply. But yeah, I I would imagine that a fairly straightforward map like that would be one of the options put in front of you.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'm closing our public input, public hearing down for now, and hopefully we'll get the word out and we'll have some comments and some thoughts on our July 8 meeting.
Just a thought, I mean.
Certainly.
Is there, can the can the citizens be assured that date will not change? Because people may be arranging their calendars.
July 8. That is a set date.
The date.
Yeah, it's a notice public hearing.
Okay, so we're not, they're not going to show up and say, oh, it was canceled?
No, no.
No?
Those dates are certain, and they're on the website. They've been on there for a couple of months.
Can we have one, a couple of options?
And I would, I would note that that there are two additional hearings that will take out, take place afterwards. So in the event that someone would want to attend one of these hearings and can't make the July 8 hearing, there are multiple opportunities for public input, both in a public hearings setting as well as offline that can that can be.
Well, that's the importance of this, to get the community involvement in this. We really want action. We want some interaction from residents.
And we'll add it to the Facebook page, so we get some more word out there as well before the July 8 meeting.
Terrific.
And then the census data will come out. And then, like I said, the the two public hearings in 2022 are set as well, and.
And when does our census come out again?
September, October.
Okay. Not until then?
Yeah. Okay.
So we can't even draw the lines till September? Number one?
Well, not with that data, not with the census data.
Not final times.
But lines can be drawn.
I'd like to just see what it looked like, 1,200.
Get some preliminary ones drawn.
Just something easy.
So Dan, can you just, can you just speak to the next, the next public hearing? And and I think we're going to have tools, mapping tools, and a few other things to discuss and go over at that time?
Yes. So we'll, we'll hopefully have those tools available by the next public hearing. And while you are correct that we cannot have official maps either produced by us, NDC, or the city, until we have that official census data, members of the public can use the tools as soon as they become available to draw their own maps using the estimated data that we provide. And our hope is that this estimated data is pretty good and and pretty accurate, and that there may have to be some fine tuning made once the official census data comes in. But the maps that people draw with the estimated data can then have the official data and put it into them and hopefully be very similar, if not identical.
Good. Terrific.
And all that is, we did create a separate page on the website, which is required, and it will be updated each time we have additional information, mapping information. Everything is is going to be on there. I believe it has to be up for, I want to say, 10 years. Is that right, Doug? 10 years, so.
Okay.
Yeah. And all the mapping tools and everything will be pretty well accessible.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Mr. Phillips, Mr. Johnson, thank you very much for explaining the process to us. And it should be an interesting few months. Anyway, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on to council member comments slash items, we'll start with Councilmember Lewis. Any comments or items from you tonight?
Um, no, no comments or items. I will wait for committee reports.
All righty. Perfect. Vice Mayor Sanchez, comments, items?
No, not at this time. I would like to thank the people that put together the Memorial Day event, and it was, it was short but sweet, and it was, but it was nice. A lot of people showed up and enjoyed our artwork, and I just want, I appreciate.
And the artwork is still available to go see.
I think we're going to try to leave it through the summer. If there's any reason to take it down.
Good. Thank you. Councilman King, comments, items?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Mendrisik? Nothing? Okay, I just had one. I wanted just a kind of a verbal okay from council members. I don't know if, I mentioned it at our last meeting, that the Air Pollution Control District met, and there was a list of violations. Central Coast Agriculture, Don De Frue, on Santa Rosa Road, has had some diesel generators that are not allowed with cannabis operations. One of them's been operating for over 300 days. There's, I think, eight, eight generators, four or eight generators out there. They've been told, they're, the APCD is discussing, they're trying to come to an agreement as to what the penalty should be for this. And Central Coast Ag has told the county that they are not going to pull the plug on these generators because it would hurt them financially until later in the summer. Diesel generators produce carcinogens, which are blowing into Buellton. And I would like our city manager to write a letter to APCD and to the county, telling them that we feel very strongly that the maximum penalty should be applied, since obviously this company doesn't care about what's blowing into Buellton. And I also believe that Buellton should be compensated. Part of the penalties paid to the county should come to Buellton, since we're the ones that are receiving the benefits of these diesel generators. So if that's okay with the council, I, before I, the city manager writes a letter, I'll bring it up at APCD meeting next week, but is it okay if he sends a letter to APCD and the county?
So the right way to do this under the Brown Act is if any of you object, it'll be a single person's objection. We're not going to give any direction. But if anybody objects, let the mayor know that you would not like to see this done. Otherwise, it's the mayor's prerogative. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy.
Seems on schedule. It's, it's the appropriate time to do it.
For discussion, we can discuss it. We can't discussion.
No discussion unless there's an objection, then.
It's, it's just one of my comments slash items.
I wouldn't like to get into part of that. It's because we're trying to get, it's part of somebody's penalties or fines. You know, it's like the, you know, putting a traffic cop and getting his money or something, but.
Well, I guess what bothered me the most about reading the articles that were put out from Central Coast Ag was that they, they admit that they've done wrong, but they're in the middle of a harvest, and they don't want to stop the generators, even though they know that it's carcinogenic, and that the wind is, we are a half a mile from their operation. And that's what got me angry, is the fact that they, their, their bottom line is more important than the health of our community. So, and if you're, if you don't think that we should receive any compensation for this, I just want Buellton on the record that we're not happy with this.
Let's say we're unlucky, but we're sitting in the middle of a freeway, and there's more trucks and cars than.
Councilman King?
I think we're walking a fine line on the Brown Act right now. And I think that to resolve this, we should just agendize it, put it out to the public for discussion by the council and the public.
I just wanted to get it in before the APCD meeting next week. But that's, that's okay. If if there are disagreements with the way I'd like it handled, then that's fine. We can bring it back, and and I'm sure it's not going to be resolved with APCD. It sounds like they're dragging their feet as much as they can on this. I just think it's really wrong, so.
We can't discuss this any further. We've gotten objection. It's still the mayor's prerogative, but I think we've had about as much explanation of the issue as as we can. So I think if if the council wants to to discuss it, the mayor's made a very good point. The matter will very likely not be decided at the next meeting, and, you know, more background, more discussion is not a bad thing. We can certainly bring it back in two weeks, and you guys can have a more more full discussion.
I, I am going to bring it up at APCD myself, that I am upset with this, the way it's been handled. But we can bring it back to council to see what the city of Buellton wants to do.
Yeah, I think to avoid a Brown Act violation, we should probably do that.
If you want to do the, have Scott do the letter in your own, that would be.
Well, it would have to be an unanimous, correct, Counselor?
That's, that's kind of where we were before, was the the mayor was going to do it, but just sort of wanted to make sure that there were no objections. So having heard at least a need for discussion, it wouldn't really be on behalf of the whole city at that point. So the mayor making the comments perfectly acceptable, and then we'll have a discussion in two weeks, and the letter can follow that.
Okay. That's fine. I just, I'm, I am really upset with our county and Central Coast Ag right now. Okay.
Understand.
Moving on, written communications.
No written communications this evening, Madam Mayor.
All righty. Committee reports. Councilmember Lewis?
Okay. My time to shine. So I had a committee meeting with the Buellton Union School District, I think it's called the Joint Use.
Joint Use Committee.
Joint Use Committee regarding, like, the gymnasium and the rec center and all of that stuff. It was a good meeting, wasn't super long. We are looking at the contract and updates and revisions to the current MOU. We're going to come back, I think it's in a week, or on the 14th, we'll be coming back to look at the contract and terms and some of the things that we'd like to update.
Thank you very much. Any other committee reports?
Haven't met, no ma'am.
Okay. North County CAG met yesterday, and the Long Term Valley Building Projects are the Alamo-Pintado Bridge in Solvang. They're finally going to build, complete that. So when it comes down from the high school, it actually will have like a sidewalk and go to Alamo-Pintado and the highway. And the Robinson Bridge is going to be expanded. That should happen in 2025, '26, so.
Robinson Gym or the Robinson Bridge is where?
The Robinson Bridge is when you're going into Lompoc.
Okay.
Over by the shelter. So, anyway, yeah. So coming soon to a location.
Yes, here in California, we build things at the speed of a slop.
Hey, Robinson Bridge has been moved up from 2030 to 2025, '26. Moving on to our business items tonight, we are going on to agenda item number seven, which is discussion and approval of arts and culture project applications, Buellton Equals. Is Mr. Abello in the house?
Yes, indeed. I am here.
Good.
Hi, there. I guess I was, I have an old agenda at the the Williamson property discussion before.
We reordered the agenda.
We reordered for you.
Thank you. I, I guess I didn't hear that earlier in the the sound problem.
I glossed over it, Cole.
Yes. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. Very glad to be with you again this evening. We have another creative arts and culture project called Buellton Equals dot, dot, dot. The applicant, Davis Reinhardt, is here with us as well. He grew up here in Buellton, attended Honda and Oak Valley Elementary Schools, graduated from the high school in 2020, and is now attending the University of Michigan Ann Arbor, majoring in music composition. The purpose of the, his proposed project is to commission an original work of music that embodies what it means to live in Buellton and the creation of a professional recording for use by the city. Second phase proposed for summer of 2022 would entail the live performance of this composition by a full orchestra at a Buellton venue. The complete application is included as attachment one. The resume for Mr. Reinhardt is attachment two, and attachment three is his, a copy of his certificate, because he was one of the Norman Gale Williams Buellton Education Scholars. Attachment four is a basic guide to the commissioning of music that explains standard fees, fee ranges, copyright information, just to give some guidance for those of us who don't regularly work on music commissions. And then the attachments five to eight are samples of the applicant's past compositions. You can hear several varieties of musical genres on those samples. The requested grant is $5,830. That would pay for the first phase of the project, which includes the composer's work, professional musicians, sound recording engineer, and miscellaneous printing and production costs to produce the recording and bound original score with a dedication page to the city. And of course, any unspent funds are required to be returned to the city. The arts and cul- The Arts and Culture Committee discussed the project at length and recommended that city council approve the first phase of the project and reserve consideration of funding for the second phase for 2022. The remaining budget for this fiscal year for arts and culture is $19,058. And this fiscal impact is again, the $5,830 for this first phase. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions from council and then I'd like to also introduce Mr. Reinhardt, who could elaborate more on his project.
Thank you very much. Why don't we hear from Mr. Reinhardt first and then we'll take any questions from council to either of you. Welcome, Mr. Reinhardt. I remember you from being the recipient of the Williams Scholarship and you, I, I remember you were incredibly gifted with your musical talents. Please, do you have anything to add to what Kyle said?
Yeah, thank you so much for having me here tonight and it's such a privilege to be able to participate in this project and being able to be considered for this proposal. And so my general idea is to create something that just embodies Beulton's characteristics through sound and music. So that's including sounds that can be representative of the city, meaning perhaps like wind and traffic. And then also I'm hoping to include voices of people in the city. So going around the community, interviewing people that I know, friends of people who I don't necessarily know, and just getting their voices, which would be included in the music itself. So I would have this direct collaboration with members of the community and then they would be in the actual piece that would be presented and recorded. And then there would be, I'm hoping to have a maximum of eight live performers who would then play music over this fixed media track of voices and other electronic sounds and represented, representative sounds of the city. So that's my general idea of what the piece will be and a max of about 12 minutes, probably eight to 12 minutes. But because I haven't written a piece yet, I can't, I can't actually say what the final outcome will be or sound like. So, but that's my general vision and, and I know within the time span that I've laid out for the next four to six months that that will 100% be doable.
All righty. Thank you very much. Any questions for either Mr. Reinhardt or for Kyle?
Yes, for Mr. Reinhardt. What spurred your interest in this program? What caused you to seek out this grant and start this program?
Well, thankfully Diane Byington, who applied for this project last summer, referred me to this and I took notice to other projects from the Beulton's website and I just really saw that the, that Beulton had a need and for, for more arts and cultures in the city. I wrote about it in my essay actually last year of just that I think the city could use some more music and, and general culture and influences that, that represent the city's identity. Also usually when I tell people where I'm from, because nobody really knows where Beulton is, other than where Peace of Anderson is, I usually have to say Santa Barbara. But I think by creating something that really embodies Beulton with this piece and sharing it with as many people as possible, it can, I think, just help put Beulton more on the map of, of a prominent artistic city.
Any other questions?
Of a homegrown talent.
We do have a homegrown talent here. I am opening it up to the public. I do have one public comment. I don't know if Linda's gotten any more in. This one is from Diane Byington. Hello, dear members of the city council. I am writing in support of a grant you are considering for a composition by Davis Reinhardt. I have hired him as a piano accompanist for a few solving conservatory recitals and have also asked him to do a few simple arrangements for my students. I can assure you that he is a wonderful composer and as you probably know, a really responsible and civic-minded young man. Thank you for encouraging and recognizing arts in your community. Sincerely, Diane Byington, Director of the Solving Conservatory. Do we have any other public comment? Linda?
No ma'am.
All righty. Then I'm going to close it, bring it back for discussion. Yeah?
I was just going to ask David if, would we, could we classify this eight to 12 minutes as a blending of sound and music? Would, would that be a way for the community to zero in? They want to talk about something specific. Would this, would that fit? I, I was going to ask David if he felt he was blending.
Davis, did you hear, did you hear the question?
I did, yeah. And so I would consider it a, a blending of, of sound on its own and music. And so that's why I would have just sounds of the city in whatever form that may be and then voices of people in the city, which would be mixed with music that's played by musicians of playing different instruments. So, yeah, I guess a synergistic blend, yeah.
Seemed like that might be the best way to refer to it when people want to get to that topic without.
Yeah. Well, I just, I guess my, my, my dilemma is I'm trying to figure out, it's an eight to 12 minute composition, which is wonderful to have a, a Beulton composition, but how often would we play? I mean, we have our, our Winter Fest and our barbecue Bonanza. How often does the city get together that? Kyle?
Madam Mayor, just, just to maybe expand on, on this a little bit, the, the professional recording that the track that would be provided to the city could be put on the city website. It could be also even looped into a, an, a, a sound art piece that would be located at a city park or it could actually be in multiple locations. So I think that's, that's the electronic recording portion of the, of this project. Phase two would be the live performance of it. And I believe that Mr. Reinhardt was looking at performance, you know, hopefully by the Santa Maria Philharmonic, but not just of that one composition because a, an eight to 10 minute concert is pretty short, but to have other, other pieces performed as well. So this would be kind of the, the, the highlight of the concert, but then there'd be other musical pieces as well. Is that, is that pretty accurate, Mr. Reinhardt?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. Yeah, I have talked to the maestro of the Santa Maria Phil. I was this, this past year nominated to be on their board of directors and so I've been trying to promote this relationship between our city and their organization because they've tried to do more outreach. And so my hope was to prop this by own pace and try to bring their organization out to our community this way, so.
All righty. Thank you.
And one of, one other thing, Madam Mayor, if I might, in the description that, that Davis gave to the Arts and Culture Committee, the original comp, composition for music performance, the sounds, and then a third component, which I don't know if he explained as much, for interviews of individual Beulton residents. And this is where the committee gave some suggestions to Davis, you know, contacting the historical society, you know, prominent families who have been here for a while, Dr. Buell, the Mendenhalls, to really get, capture a flavor of, of the city and its residents. And one of the other things the committee encouraged Davis to do as well was videotape those interviews, which could again be utilized by the historical society at, in future installations.
All righty. Thank you very much. Bring it back to council for discussion, possible action?
I move to approve.
Second.
All righty, we've got a motion and a second on this. Linda?
Okay. Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrusik.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor Sear.
Aye. Can't wait to hear it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Okay. Wow, that'll be interesting.
Got some work ahead of you.
Yeah. That'll be, that'll be fun.
For a music festival.
Okay. Moving on. Agenda item number eight is resolution number 21-10, a resolution of the city council of the city of Beulton, California, adopting the biannual physical year, fiscal year, sorry, 2021, 22 and 22, 23 budget. Ms. Zamora.
Madam Mayor and City Council, before you tonight is proposed budget for fiscal year 21, 22 and 22, 23 for adoption with additions from the prior meeting of May 13th. Tonight's, tonight's discussion will focus on the changes made instead of the, as the budget as a whole. Some of the changes, the staff report are proposed by city, are from city council recommendations and for their staff review. And before I go ahead and explain those changes, I do want to mention there is a last minute addition here of $2,000 and which is going to be for the planning department 602, 60210 computer software and computer maintenance. This addition is for the GIS software that the planning department is going to use. This is in addition of what they currently have and that $2,000 is going to be added to fiscal year 21, 22 and fiscal year 22, 23. So overall, the proposed changes to the previously presented budget for the general fund is a decrease of $222,356 or, let me repeat that, $222,356 for fiscal year 21, 22 and $263,456 for fiscal year 22, 23. The final proposed general fund budget estimates operating revenue of $8,850,232 and operating expenditures at $8,110,612 with that $2,000 addition. That is an operating surplus of $739,612. The general fund capital improvement project totals $2,316,696. The CIPs are funded through reserves, but before we use reserves, we go ahead and apply the surplus. During this time, city council can review the budget further and if they have any additions or they can recommend anything else. So just for ease of time, I'll go ahead and summarize all the major changes in the budget. And I'll start with the first one, which is a reduction in transfer from reserves for CIP. The reduction of the use of reserve is $30829 for fiscal year 21, 22 and $377,736 for fiscal year 22, 23. The reason for this reduction is the reallocation of monies for the 092-321 road maintenance project and 092307 McMurray Road widening. There was budget savings from previous projects from measure A and gas tax and we went ahead and allocated those budget savings from gas tax and mess rate instead of the general fund. So that is mostly due to the reduction in general fund expenditures. In addition to that, we also had some increases from the prior proposed budget and some of those budget changes or decreases due to city council direction at the previous meeting, those were pretty small numbers. So again, just to highlight the significant changes, the first one being the addition of a principal and interest budget line item for, in the non-departmental fund or department, The increase was $34,306 for year one and $36,046 for year two. The increase was due to account for the principal interest paid to Sterling's Bank for the capital lease issued by, issued for the NG Energy Project. The first loan payment is scheduled to be due on January 1st, 2022 and these payments will be due annually for the life of the loan, which is 20 years. The second largest increase of, in the previously proposed budget is in the Public Safety Department. The increase in appropriations was $79,026 for the first year and this reflects the actual amount to be contracted with the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Office. Previously, the number proposed was what the city estimated we were going to pay. And so this reflects the final number. We do not know the final amount for next fiscal year of 22, 23. So we're projecting a 5% increase, which equates to $119,080 for the previously estimated budget. And then another large item, well, it's not too large, but wanted to mention is at the previous budget meeting, we discussed moving computer and software maintenance for the recreation department. They had to replace some computers. So we went ahead and added the computer equipment category and this will replace three of their outdated computers for a total cost of $4,500. And also for the second year, fiscal year 22, 23, after city council discussion on May 13th, we went ahead and estimated some potential electric savings from the energy project. So you can see that in that second year, the various departments under utilities electric. And that is pretty much it on the additions. Like I mentioned, some of the other ones are pretty small and were as a result of city council direction. And so I'll go ahead and move now to the water, wastewater fund. So these proposed changes come from, again, city council direction and the addition of the principal and interest budget line item for the NG project. For the first year, the addition for the principal interest is $53,175 and the second year, $55,872. And also a, a thing to note is when I was reviewing the budget a second time, I realized that I had transposed the capital improvement project amount between the water and sewer fund so that you see it there on your staff report, table three, in the transfers to other funds. If there's a reduction of $598,871, the reduction of that is to reflect the actual cost of the project and that's the amount of increase that you'll see in the waterfront. Do you have any, any questions on the wastewater changes before I move on?
Councilmember, any questions? Water?
The current projects, which would be the NG project. So the money that's in reserves for 21, 22 is already there from the capital lease loan. Does that make sense?
Yes.
One more, and this is directed at Scott. You probably sat down and took a look at all the numbers on this. Wonderably proposed to be flush on wastewater and not have to transfer any funds. Is there any projection on that or you guys just been?
We, we don't have a projection on it at this point. The, the trend over the last several years has, has not been moving in that direction.
Right.
It's been very slowly moving in the other, in the other direction.
For many years.
Yeah, there, even after the, the rate increase though, it continues to trend slowly in the wrong direction. There is a possibility that with, with potential energy savings through NG, that might be staved off a little bit more, but I don't have a projection at this point for being flush. We will be looking at that and coming back to the city council with a number of alternatives for addressing that though in the future.
Okay. It's been an issue for many years.
Yes, I know.
Water's doing better.
Yeah.
All righty, any other questions? Chanel, move, carry on.
So I'll move now to the water fund. The final proposed water fund budget estimates operating revenue at about two point six million dollars and operating expenditures, again, about two point six. So a small surplus of thirty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars exists. In addition, we're going to transfer money from the reserves for CIP projects. And if you notice on table four, we're showing an increase of five hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred seventy-one from reserves. As I mentioned, that is to account for the actual costs or allocation of the water fund or NG, from the NG project. And again, we added principal interest to reflect the, the lease cost. And that second year, we added potential savings from the energy project. So those potential savings for that second year is about fifty-five thousand dollars. And again, if you have any other questions on any other water fund proposed?
Councilman Andresek.
Chanel, what page is the water? You discussed the large amount of money.
So this one is on the staff report, page one oh two.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If you have no other questions, I can move on.
Are you okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. The next budget changes are to the gas tax fund. And like I mentioned earlier, we found savings in the gas tax and measure A fund that was able to fund the McMurray Road and Road Maintenance Project of nine two, three, two, one. So the table five shows the proposed changes. So the transfer from reserves is going to be eighty-one thousand and forty-nine dollars the first year and seventy thousand, five hundred sixty-seven the second year. And then for the second year, as I mentioned on May thirteenth meeting, there was a typo on the budget. It showed that that one thousand for encroachment permits and it should have been ten thousand, so that was an increase of nine thousand dollars.
Zeros.
Yes. And so the next change was to the LTF fund. And this came from city, city council direction on May thirteenth, increasing the amount to transfer to bike reserves to fifty thousand from twenty thousand. So that was an increase of thirty thousand dollars.
This is our trail, is that correct?
Yes, this is for the, the trail. And then the last proposed changes were to measure A. And this was to use the reserves from budget savings for the two road projects for McMurray Road and the Road Maintenance Project. So these changes are reflected in table seven. And those are all the proposed changes from the, the previously proposed budget. If city council has any additions, they can discuss it and we can add it. So staff recommends that city council considers resolution number twenty-one, ten, adopting the fiscal year budget twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, with the revision of the two thousand dollars mentioned earlier tonight. And I now turn it over to city councils for discussion and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Chanel. Any questions for our finance director?
I had a question about the arts and culture fund, is that, that's rolling over?
The remaining reserves will roll over and we're adding fifty thousand to that, correct Chanel?
We are showing fifty thousand, but if you want any rollover to be included in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, we can certainly do that.
May I like to do that?
Yes. I would do. Someday I'd like to see there be enough money in that that we can put a fountain or sculpture, something more permanent for the city, so, yeah, if that's agreeable.
Sure.
Okay. All righty, any other questions? Then I open it up to the public. I don't have any public comment on our budget. Linda, did you receive anything?
No comments.
All righty, closing it down. Council, discussion, approval, motions?
My motion to approve with the amended edits as requested.
All righty, thank you.
Can I, can I have one second? I was looking for this, sorry. And then, and then I'll second that.
Okay.
Chanel, I just had a question about on page one forty. Is the gas tax, and maybe I missed something, but that was down significantly, like thirty percent? What, what was that?
On gas tax, let me see.
Two five? Zero, two, five on page one forty and it was, was proposed in twenty-one, twenty-two, five, seventy-one and then it went down to three ninety-seven, which was a thirty percent. Was there some condition that caused that?
Yes, it's capital improvement project mostly, so for that.
Tractor from capital projects.
Yeah, so fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three only shows road maintenance project twenty-two, twenty-three versus fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two shows McMurray Road, road maintenance projects for twenty twenty-one. So that one's expected to be completed next fiscal year. So we don't need to fund it that following year.
Gotcha, okay. I just thought that was a big number, so that clarifies that to me. And I'll second council members, Louis's motion for approval.
Resolution number twenty-one dash ten, Linda.
Okay, council member Louis.
Aye.
Council member King.
Aye.
Council member Andresek.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye. Thank you.
And Chanel, thank you for the absolutely time-consuming effort on this project.
Yes, indeed. You're welcome.
A lot of reading, too. Imagine putting it together was even worse.
Yeah.
Must have been like a puzzle.
Yeah, and we, and so the final budget will be printed with tonight's revisions. And in addition, it will have extra content to satisfy the GFOA requirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, will that have to come back to us?
No, you've approved it. She's only making the changes that you've already approved.
Thank you very much. Moving on. Agenda item number six, decision on future use of main residence building at two oh two Dairyland Road, the Willamston property. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As you are all aware, the city closed escrow in May of twenty twenty on the Willamston property. And since that time, has been compiling community input on potential future uses of the various components of the Willamston property. A couple of open houses were held late in twenty twenty and a couple of special city council meetings were held in twenty twenty-one to discuss this matter and collect additional public input. There is a list of proposed uses that, that had been collected through this public input campaign that's included in your staff report. I'll read off a few of them, but there are quite a few. Sports fields, daycare and preschool, outdoor event center, roller skating skateboard area, conference center, carpentry shop, extension of botanical gardens, tennis and pickleball courts, equestrian center, historical society museum, wedding venue, residential development. There, there are more. I, I will spare you the complete list. At the special meeting that the city council held on May fifteenth, the city council decided to hold final discussions at this evening's hearing for potential uses for the house at the Willamston property. At that point, the city council decided, rather than trying to make decisions on all components of the property at once, you would break it up. The, the house seems to be the one component of the city, of the Willamston property that has the most contention as to competing uses which would like to occupy it. The, there are three essential proposals or, or significant suggestions for the Willamston house that have been presented to the city at this point. The three of them are discussed in the staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have or get into more depth beyond my short verbal report this evening if the city council would like me to do that. But essentially, those three proposals or suggestions would be to house, use the house to, to house an expanded operation of the Zaca Center preschool or a, a, a new location for the Buellton Public Library. To, or, or a, excuse me, a wedding venue has been proposed. And then the city council received a proposal earlier in the week from Mimi O'Connor on this proposal. And while there are other uses which the city council can certainly consider, those are the three significant suggestions that have come to the, to staff's attention so far. I will note that there has been a, a formal offer to purchase the property that's been received by staff. The intent, should the city council desire to investigate that offer further, is to schedule that for a closed session hearing at an upcoming city council meeting, either regular or special. The city council may choose to postpone discussion of the house this evening for that purpose. The city council may decide to go ahead and hold discussion on potential uses for the house and then withhold a decision or continue that item to a future meeting until after the closed session discussion of the sale of the property takes place. Or the city council may decide that the, the offer, which is unsolicited at this time, is, 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 doesn't merit the council's consideration at this time, in which case you can go ahead and discuss and decide on the future use of the house as you see fit. I'll leave that decision to the city council to make. There are various aspects of the different proposals that would contribute to fiscal impacts to the city. At this point, there are just too many variables to pin them all down. A lot of those fiscal impacts would need to be resolved through subsequent negotiations with proposed operators or occupants of the house. That, those fiscal impacts would be revealed at such time as those negotiations are completed and the city council were prepared to make a decision on a, an agreement of some sort in the future. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions the city council may have. Staff does recommend that the city council make a determination as to whether or not the, the offer on the house is, or what the city council's desire is with regard to the offer on the house. Take public testimony and if deemed appropriate, make a decision this evening on future uses for the house. And with here, with this, I'll conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so what I would like to do, I've received, we've got two, I see two speakers on Zoom to talk about the house. I've received a few emails that do need to be read into the record, people who want to be heard about this. This will happen, but before we start that, I guess I want to know from council, are we interested in listening to this, going into closed session at a later date to discuss the potential sale of the property? Or are there a majority here who would prefer not to sell the property at this time and we can move on and perhaps make a decision as to the house tonight? I am personally, after owning the property for one year, I am not ready to sell it yet. It's something that can be done really at any time the city wants to. But at this point in time, I am not interested in selling it. I'm wondering if there is a majority in that direction or if we need to have this discussion and then still have a closed session at a later date.
Is that a motion?
No.
No.
Madam Mayor, if I may, there is a caveat to that. If we do lease it to someone, we can't sell it out from under them. We'd have to break that lease with them.
Well, if the preschool got the house, we could not sign a thirty-year lease that they want. It would be a much shorter lease. But it is city property and it can be sold at any time. I just think after listening to the community for all these months, that it just doesn't seem quite right to just make the decision to sell the property. But then again, that's, there are five of us up here. So before we go any further, do we want to go into closed session at a later date and discuss the sale of the property or?
My concern with considering the sale of the property is the historic nature of the property and the likelihood that a sale would not fit with the vision for that property. And I am not at a point where I would be interested in considering a sale. If that helps.
Okay. I mean, down the line?
Well, let's quantify that. What portion of that property? We're talking about just the house, the barn?
Well, the offer that was made was for two city properties. Sorry, Mr. Murphy, go ahead.
So I, I will let the city manager sort of describe the offer in general terms. Because of the way it was submitted, it's not appropriate to give great detail here. But, Mr. City Manager, if you could just describe which portion of the Willamston property is, is being considered?
Yeah, that's. Okay, the, the offer that was received proposes the sale of the upper four acres of the Willamston property in conjunction with the sale of the city-owned property at the, the corner of Second and Central.
So the house and the barn?
The house, the barn, the, the, the tractor shed, equipment shed, whatever you want to call it. Basically, all of the areas above the, the lower portion, yes.
Gentlemen, is anybody wanting? I mean, there's two who are not interested at the present time.
Well, if it's the entire four acres, I would also be in opposition to that.
Okay, thank you.
I think that, you know, we, that's a wonderful piece of property to have. And I would, I think we would be short, being short-sighted or short-thinking to get, to, to enter into a sale this early with the, the property. There, there's a lot of development yet to be made in the, in the county. And I think we have a wonderful asset there and I would like to see us maximize the potential for the benefit of our citizens.
Thank you. Very well put.
I'll second that. You're a citizen. I'll second you, no, you're not.
Okay. So at the present time, we are not interested in selling the property. That is consensus of council. Down the line, I appreciate that the developer realizes that the main reason we bought the property was for the lower acreage. But we've, we've stumbled upon a very valuable piece of Buellton history. And at the present time, we're not going to.
I will convey that to the person who made the offer.
Okay, so any questions before I get into all these public comments for the city manager? None?
I have a comment. If you want to wait till comment section, you can do that, please.
Madam Mayor, if, if your next step is the, is the public comments. Before you do that, if I might, I just wanted to clarify something in my verbal report that I, I failed to do. The, the public comments you'll hear tonight are, there are quite a number of them. A, a number of them are conflating the, the use of the, of the Willamston Property House as a new Buellton Public Library with the expansion of the senior center. And, and while I understand that from the perspective of a number of the people that are commenting on that, those two are definitely related. But the issue before the city council this evening is simply the use of the Willamston property, the house in particular. The, any decision regarding an expansion of the senior center would need to take place at a subsequent agendized public meeting. And so, just so, for the benefit of the public out there, so that they understand that a decision one way or another on the, the house does not necessarily mean that the next step is, 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 is being made tonight as well.
Correct, thank you. Because you'll hear a lot about the senior center in these public comments.
Is anyone opposed to me closing the door?
Please close the door.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, yeah. Okay, so I'm opening it to public comment. Before I read the thirty pages or so, I will ask, I see Pam Nico and Mimi O'Connor as Zoom. I'll start with Pam Nico and you'll get your three minutes. And then I'll move to Mimi and she'll get her three minutes. And if there's anybody else on the Zoom. And if there's anybody else on the Zoom that wants to speak on the subject, I guess you raise your hand or holler out. But Pam, I'll let you start first. After you unmute. You're muted. You're muted.
You're on mute with, there you go.
Now, can you hear me? Okay, great. Sorry. So, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, thanks for listening today.
I'm sorry, Pam. If, maybe move a little closer, you dropped out again here.
Can you hear me? Now, can you hear me a little bit better?
Tiny.
Yeah.
Kind of like a bear in a beacon.
Tiny. Oh, perfect.
There you go.
Let's see, I don't know how, okay. So, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, first of all, thank you very much for deciding to keep the property for a while longer and letting it see how it benefits the city of Buellton. I, I know that a lot of the public comment is for the senior center, but tonight I'm asking you, I really feel like that, on behalf of the seniors and the families in the city of Buellton, that it would really benefit the community to have the library moved over to the Williamson House for a lot of reasons. One, just the, just the atmosphere at the, at the Williamson House is just, just a better fit for having kids, kids inside and outside reading. Hopefully, one of the, the items brought up would be the outdoor children's museum. We already have the park, we already have the botanical gardens. Bringing all of those, all of the entities in to benefit the community is just a really good fit. And also, like, when you look at different things in Buellton and you look at different cities, I think that it would be a very unique property that when people are coming and looking at our valley, that they could see how unique that would be for, for the, and of course, I can't leave you without saying that if the library does go over there, we would really appreciate any consideration from the council to expand the senior center over to where the library would make it. I think it's a win-win for, for all of the community to, to make that. So, thank you very much for your consideration and your time.
Thank you very much for hanging in tonight, Pam. Mimi, your turn.
Madam Mayor, before.
Hold on just a sec, Mimi. Question for?
It's not a question, it's just that if we could have everybody that's on and go speak, remember, we're only talking about the House, no future agenda items included.
She's got it. That was just a wish.
Yeah.
Mimi, you're up.
Okay. So, as some of you know, I was kind of wavering on not going forward with my proposal. And then I had some discussions with council members and learned a few things about Buellton that made me decide that this proposal is important to preserve the history of that property and a great way to celebrate where it's placed and enjoy the, the beauty of the, the whole property. So, so here it is. I don't think Buellton wants to be in the wedding business, but what this is, is a proposal to be in the rental business. So basically, you would just be renting the house. I guess if it were with weddings, then we could have overnight guest stay in conjunction with the weddings and that would bring in the, the most money. And so, the only thing I've left out of the proposal is the TOT bed tax 12% that you would also be making, so it's more. I also just based it on a very conservatively booked calendar so that it leaves it open for other events or other rentals for other purposes. So I don't know if you have any questions for me, but I think, I think, I think it's important to hang on to this property and not sell it. I also think that putting the library in kind of leaves you without any revenue and in fact, would cost a lot of money to, to move even if it's across the street. And, there you go. And if you wanted to make a decision tonight on the House, I gave you a Plan B, which would put the weddings in the barn, which you, you're not deciding on tonight, so.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mimi? None. All righty. Thank you very much. I'm going to start reading public comment. Linda, when I finished, you said there's a couple more that have come in since I finished printing. The first one is from Finn Rungy, Buellton City Council. Thank you for buying this beautiful property. The best way to use the Willamston property. The library use of the main house will serve the 5,082 people, 2019 of Buellton. Plus, the senior center can use the old library space, thereby serving the senior people also. This is like a two-for-one deal. The possible use of the preschool will only serve 200 people at most. If the Willamston family wanted to have the land developed, they would have sold it to them, him. This would serve one person, most likely not from Buellton. The lawn overlooking this great valley would be a great, great for destination weddings. The barn is great for a lot of uses for our community. Our son and daughter-in-law got married there, a day to remember always. Thanks for listening, Finn Rungy. The next one is Arian Weaver. I've been a resident of Buellton for almost 20 years and in that time, I have made use of the library and senior center regularly, at least once a week. Both facilities are cramped and too small for their current use. The senior center is always crowded, they don't have enough rooms for programs. The library could probably offer a better selection of new books if they had a larger venue. Book clubs, writing groups in their own space would be so convenient for all. Please take these facts into your consideration. Many thanks. Arian Weaver, Ph.D. I've got to pronounce here. The next one is from Judith Dale. Dear City Council, I'm writing to ask you to approve the library moving to the Willamston House at this time. I believe that's the best use of the property to serve the most Buellton residents with the move. Not only will the library obtain a larger facility, more parking, be able to serve more people. And then she talks about the senior center moving into the old space. This is a win-win situation. As the third district representative to the county's library advisory committee, the library advisory committee's representative to the county library ad hoc committee, and president of the Buellton Friends of the Library organization, I know the library's situation well. The Buellton library has the most use per capita in the county, yet the current library space is inadequate. Also, library parking is a huge problem as the parking lot is shared with the post office, the sheriff's department, and the senior center. The proposed new location would solve these problems without negatively impacting the surrounding neighborhood as visits to the library are spread out throughout the day so there's no traffic surge. Also, the new location is easily walkable for schoolchildren, singers, and of course, people in the neighborhood. Once again, a win-win situation. I realize there are many worthy organizations that would like this space. However, I think the library moving, senior center moving serves the most Buellton residents and is the most efficient use of the space. Thanks for your consideration. Best wishes with your decision. Judith Dale. Ah, okay. I missed this one. Okay. Dear Ms., or, I've been a board member of the Buellton Senior Center a little less than a year. Prior to that, I was somewhat aware of the great work that Pam and Linda and all those at Buellton Senior Center do. All the wonderful things that the center does, having the library in such a beautiful spot. I'm kind of going past the moving into, the senior center moving into, or should I read it word for word? Counselor.
I think generally, we would want them to be read word for word.
Okay.
Having said that, if we were operating under normal circumstances and the people were in the room giving the testimony, you as a council would have asked them to not give the part about the senior center moving because that's not before you tonight. So, if you can take out a discreet portion, please feel free to do so because that's what you would have asked them not to comment on. If it's blended together, it's better just to read it rather than trying to kind of skip one sentence here and there.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, I apologize to the people that have written in. I am going to try to creatively, if it's too mixed up, I'll read it verbatim, but a lot of these involve the senior center and that would be another topic. So, Kathy Herringer talks about the library being in a beautiful spot as the ranch will be like a breath of fresh air for the community. That location will be able to become such a desirable and memorable spot for so many families in our community. Please consider my request and those of so many others who see great benefit in allowing the SYV community outreach to expand into the larger, more workable space and in moving the library to a safe, happy environment for all of the families of Buellton to enjoy. Thanks so much, Kathy Herringer. Okay. Next one is Irene Covington. I'm emailing in support of the library moving to the Willamston House. What a beautiful setting for a library for the kids, parents, and singers. The library would be a great place to house Buellton Senior Center. They certainly could use the space and it could best service our community. Please give this great consideration. Thank you. Irene Covington. Okay, didn't have this one. This is, our community Ranch Club Estate has about 400 senior residents. Many of them depend on the Buellton Senior Center, which provides many great services and does a great job very consistently. We support them moving to the library and know it will be even better for our residents and the population of Buellton. The current location behind the library is so small, surely the city of Buellton can do this for all of us. Respectfully, the Park Manager Ranch Club Estates, Debbie Damron. The next one, I totally support moving the library to the Willamston property and expanding senior center into the old library. Makes a lot of sense to me and also seems like a low-key, low-noise slash traffic use of Willamston, from Donna Haslett, a Buellton resident. I respectfully request that the council support moving the Buellton library to the Willamston property. This would be a tremendous benefit to the Buellton community. And then the senior center moving into the current space. Buellton Senior Center does a lot for singers and low-income families of Buellton and they've outgrown their location. They are now serving around 300 meals a day. They not able to continue card games, bingo. I encourage you to vote to move the library to the Willamston House and Buellton Senior Center to the library location. I'm going to save this one for later. Excuse me.
Ma'am, if I could just remind you, please to make sure you state the name of the commenter at the start.
At the start?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So this is from Mrs. Sharon Parker and family. As a resident of the city of Buellton for over 11 years, my family has had the pleasure of growing, learning, and expanding with the city. It is my opinion that the Willamston House would be a great, safe environment for kids and locals to have for a library. My mind actually goes wild with the thoughts and ideas of activities that would be possible with having a library in that location. That wouldn't be possible where the library is now. If the library is able to be moved into that location, then that leaves the library location open for the very important vital asset to our community, our Buellton Senior Center. They'd be able to expand into the current library area. Can you imagine how much that would help them in the community? So in my humble opinion, there is my recommendations. Thank you for your time and I hope you will consider my letter. Sincerely, Mrs. Sharon Parker and family. This one is from Linda Smith. At Six Flags, I'm sending this email to ask you to vote to move the library to the Willamston House and that the Buellton Senior Center be allowed to expand into the existing library building. This one is from Tony Butner. I am writing today to express my full support and consideration that the Buellton library be moved to the Willamston property where it can be more, a more enjoyable experience in such a lovely setting. Also, with the relocation of the library, the Buellton Senior Center could move into the library where they could use the space. Many people thought we were getting a new Buellton Senior Center when Tractor Supply Development went in. That didn't happen, was a huge disappointment. If the library is relocated, it's a great solution, win-win solution for us all. Please make this happen. Thank you, Tony Butner. This one is, hold on. Okay, this one is from Pat Merritt. It's come to my attention that there's a possibility of the library moving to another location. I support this as well as having the senior center moving into the space where the library is now. Please give this proposal your full consideration and support. Thank you. Pat Merritt, senior citizen of Buellton. This one is from Shirley Mercedes. I'd really like to see the Buellton Senior Center moved to the library. That was Shirley. Then we have Camille Locklear. Good afternoon. Please consider moving the Buellton library to the Willamston property. It seems like a win-win for both the senior center and the library. What lovely grounds for the library and so close to the park. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Camille Locklear, Buellton resident and big fan of our little library. The next one is from Mabel Shavetsky. Good afternoon, council members. My name's Mabel Shavetsky. My husband and I are 22-year residents of Buellton and we think that it's a very good idea that the Buellton library moved to the Willamston House and for the Buellton Senior Center to expand their operation. Both enterprises offer valuable services to our community. This would be a welcome change for Buellton. And while I've got your attention, please vote no on the proposed La Lotta Court project if and when the project comes your way. A project this size doesn't belong in the cul-de-sac of a quiet family neighborhood such as La Lotta Drive. Thank you for your time and service, Mabel Shavetsky. Gina Reinschild, please consider voting to move the library to the Willamston House and allowing the Buellton Senior Center to expand into that building. Then we have Karen Corville. Please vote for library to move to this location, expand senior center. Vivian Engel, she says, I love the idea of putting the library there. Then we have Lenny Grant, who says, dear Buellton City Council, I think it would be great if you would vote to move the Buellton library to the Willamston House and allow the Buellton Senior Center to expand. We need, need a bigger place so we can have more activities and not feel all squished. We love where BSD is located. It's a nice walk from our living quarters. Many of us enjoyed pre-COVID, hanging out there every day. Thank you for your consideration. Lenny Grant, Buellton resident, 48 years. Then she sends another one saying, forgot to mention that I had two recommendations for the Willamston property. Move both the library and that precious little preschool that's currently crowded into the compact neighborhood in Franchot de Maria, into the very large Willamston House. We could even have community fruit and vegetable garden there along with a well-thought-out parking lot. That was Lenny Grant. Then we have Alicia and John Thomas. Dear Buellton City Council, I'd like to weigh in and ask that the Willamston House property be used as our local library and that the Buellton Senior Center could expand. Thank you for your consideration. Alicia John Thomas, avid library patrons and Buellton residents. Then we have Elizabeth Saint-Andre and Randall Jackson. Please vote to move, excuse me, and Zane Saint-Andre Jackson. Please vote to move the Buellton library to the Willamston House and let the senior center expand. We need more room for our senior center and a new library. We use the Galida, Solvang, and Buellton libraries at least weekly. Before the pandemic, they'd use them. Before the pandemic, and we are big supporters for more, more money to improve our libraries and expand the senior center. Then, I think I had did Shirley's already. We have, good gracious, Linda Linton. Hi, I've worked for Buellton Senior Center for over eight years and have watched this place grow and expand our outreach to many different grow and expand our outreach to many different services, not just Buellton but all of San Onis Valley. We don't just feed singers. We help many different aspects of the valley." This is all pretty much about the Singer Center, but it says, "Moving the library to the Willamson Ranch is a perfect move and setting for the people who go to relax and enjoy reading. The space is so perfect and tranquil, the center could then connect to the library to expand dining area and move offices. I want to thank you all at the city of Buellton for your ongoing support at the center. Best, Linda Linton." Okay, I'm trying to, oop, I caught up with myself. Then we have Shara and Jeff Keller. "Hello, I'm writing in support of the proposal to move the Buellton Library to the Willamson House and to expand the Singer Center into the vacated library building. The views and lighting from the new location would be inviting and inspiring, while the larger building would allow our children to expand the collection and create dedicated areas for computers, children, et cetera, and a possible outside reading area. We could better support our Singer Center by increasing the available space. Please take this letter as enthusiastic support for these proposals. Sincerely, Shara and Jeff Keller." PS, "I actually attended first grade in the current library back when the facility was Buellton School. I have very fond memories of those, and I'm so glad to see the buildings kept up and appreciated. At that time, the current police office was where our playground equipment was stored. So fun to reminisce." That was nice. Okay, then we have Kelsey Cohen, and Kelsey says, "Please do not move the library. It is accessible to all residents of the city where it is now. People who do not have vehicles can easily access at the current location but will not be able to go to the library if it's moved to Willamson Dairy. The bus does not even go there. Thank you, Kelsey Cohen, resident of Buellton and library patron." Then we have Rebecca Flynn. "I urge you to vote to move the library to the Willamson Ranch for the benefit of the citizens of Buellton and surrounding communities." Thank you, Rebecca Flynn. This is from Linda Riles. "It is requested that the library be moved to the Willamson property and allow the expansion of the Buellton Singer Center in current library space. So many possibilities for a wonderful community library and imagination space." That was Linda Riles. Then we have Julia Crookston. "As a homeowner and stakeholder in the city of Buellton, I supported the purchase of the Willamson parcels for the benefit and use of all citizens. I can think of no higher purpose than utilizing the property for a new, modern public library. Moving the library to this beautiful site and allowing the senior community center to grow its mission by utilizing existing buildings is unusual as it manages to solve a number of issues: land use, budget, access, social services. As we go forward as a city, it is a great solution. Selling properties within city limits is always short-sighted and is often the sharp wedge of barely controlled growth. Move the library into the 21st century and build out the community Singer Center for the future of all Buellton. Thank you for your consideration, Julia Crookston." Okay. I just have, it's Kathy Head 1943 at Outlook. She doesn't have her full name here. "I support Buellton Singer Center and their efforts to expand. Locating the Buellton Library over to the Willamson property would be such a pleasant and more suitable place. Their present location and the unsuitable parking because of the post office being right there is a nightmare. Really too bad. The post office doesn't have a better location. As the city grows, this will become a bigger issue down the road. I support relocating the library to the Willamson property." Then we have Shoshana Schwartz. "Dear City Council, as a board member of both the Friends of the Buellton Library and the Buellton Singer Center, I feel that moving the library to the house on the Willamson property and then allowing the Singer Center to expand would be a win-win situation for both organizations. I believe that is the best use of the property to serve the most Buellton residents. With the move, not only will the library obtain a larger facility, more parking, and be able to serve more people, but the Singer Center will be able to serve, better serve the needs of Buellton citizens. I understand that the Buellton Library has the most use per capita in the county, yet the current library space is inadequate. The proposed new location would solve the inadequate space for parking and library usage that currently exists without negatively impacting the surrounding neighborhood since visits to the library are spread out throughout the day, thus eliminating any high-traffic times. Also, the new location is easily accessible to schoolchildren and singers as well as people in the neighborhood. Once again, a win-win situation. I understand that other worthwhile organizations would like to use this space. However, since this is now a city-owned property, a public use such as the library seems logical. I think the library moving into the house and Singer Center, moving into the old library building serves the most Buellton residents and is the most efficient use of the space. Thank you for your consideration. I hope you will consider the above in your decision." That's from Shoshana Schwartz. Okay, we did Kathy. We have Louise Colbert. "I have had the great opportunity to work with and volunteer in a variety of ways with Buellton Singer Center. They provide an amazing service to the valley. By them being able to expand into the library area would mean many more people would be served in the valley. The library at the Willamson property would provide an oasis and beautiful setting for people to relax and enjoy the library. Please consider these changes to benefit the community. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, Louise Colbert, Valley Christian Fellowship Church." We're getting there. This one is from Rachel Dix. "Dear Buellton City Council members, please vote to move the library to the Willamson House and allow the Buellton Singer Center to expand." Then we have, okay, this one is from David Schwartz. "Buellton City Council, from the standpoint alone of being a resident of Buellton, I strongly support moving the library to the Willamson House property. For its size, population, and small-city staff, Buellton is a surprisingly comfortable place to live and enjoy after our time. I give credit for the living advantages in Buellton to the down-to-earth, nonpartisan city council, current park and Buellton rec facilities, and great city employees, including the past and current city manager. Expanding the library and other related services to the Willamson property would be another example of meeting the current and future needs of Buellton citizens. Offering more student study space, digital opportunities and materials, offering student and senior citizens a comfortable social meeting place, offering space for the increasing number of at-home businesses to have conference space, offering a place to provide space for community crafts and hobby groups, offering flexibility to the city to meet future but yet unknown needs, offering another reason why there is no better place to live." So then he talks about the Singer Center moving into the existing library. "In the future, the expanded library and other available facilities at the Willamson property will be appreciated by Buellton's ever-expanding singer population and new crop of students. I understand that other wonderful organizations would like to use the Willamson, but that would need to restrict the use of the facilities to other groups, unlike library use, which would widen public use of the property. However, I believe that moving the library to a larger and better physical facilities would better serve Buellton citizens, especially the future and growing student and senior citizen needs. Freying up the old library services for the facilities for the services of the Singer Center will solve both the current and more serious future citizen service problems. Please note that the reference to the Singer Center is a service misnomer. The center serves all needy citizens. No one needs Darvin Buellton. I hope you will consider the future Buellton needs in your decision. Frankly, I look forward to having craft facilities at an expanded library. Thank you for your consideration of my views, David Schwartz." Okay, then we have Monica Cluff. "Dear city of Buellton council, I am so happy to have lived in Buellton for 30 years. I am thankful for all the progress that has occurred. I am so thankful that Buellton is wise with its money. I was overjoyed to hear it purchase the Willamson property. Please consider moving the wonderful gem of our library there. It is such a beautiful sight, and adding a quiet library would be just the right touch. Parents could bring their little ones to the library, and the little ones could even have a little green lawn to play on. I understand that some also want to move the Singer Center there, too. I think that's a wonderful idea. I can imagine some of the singers wanting to take a lap around the beautiful river view, park in a loop through the incredible botanical garden. Having that beautiful view with quietness and solace will allow its citizens to ponder in peace, a place away from a chaotic world. We are the lucky ones. Thank you again for your service and thoughtful decisions to do what is best for our lovely city." Monica and Cal Cluff. Then we have Sam Burke. "Sirs," I think he means sirs and madams. "I support moving the Buellton Library to the new location at the Willamson Ranch and allowing the Singer Center to move into the old library building. The old library will never work out for a daycare center. Too many regulations to satisfy. Regards, Samuel Burke, EE, U.S. Coast Guard Veteran." Then we have Jonathan Roylance. "I like the idea of moving the library in order to expand the Singer Center. I think it should at least be explored more. Thanks, Jonathan Roylance." Richard Nagler. "I have long been a supporter of the Buellton Singer Center and the extensive services they provide to people in need in the San Onis Valley. What amazes me more is they provide these extensive services despite the cramped and inadequate facilities they occupy. Los Lejos Rotary Club's been active in increasing and improving the center, but more is needed. The opportunity to have the Singer Center occupying the current library space or the Willamson property would be a great service to serving the needs of our community. It only makes sense to do the right thing. Thank you, Richard Nagler." I've got, I think, I've, wow, I've got a couple more. Then I have Pat Helton. "Hello, I'm sending this email to ask that you please vote to move the library to the Willamson property and also the Singer Center to the old library Buellton. I love the library and would very much like to see them have an updated space at the Willamson property. As I live at Ranch Club Estates, I find these ideas great improvements to our community. Thank you for your consideration, Pat Helton." I have Elizabeth Valentine. "Please consider making the library move to the property and the Singer Center moving to the library property. This would be a win-win for both. The library for readers and researchers, and the Singer Center for singers who need a bigger space, and for the city to connect new activities for the Buellton residences." That's from Elizabeth Valentine. Norma Steele. "I would like to add my name to the list of those voting to move the library to the Willamson House and allowing the Buellton Singer Center to expand." That's Norma Jean Steele. Kristi Nordgren. "Dear Mayor Sierra and council members, I'm very much in favor of moving the Buellton Library to the Willamson House and expanding the Buellton Singer Center into the current. These two community service cornerstones, which are heavily used and supported by community members, rightly merit council support. As a board member of the Buellton Friends of the Library and a Buellton Union School District trustee, I support any action that increases community access to literacy and information. Right now, our physical library space is quite cramped and limited, slash, shared parking poses an additional unique challenge. Thanks for your thoughtful consideration of this issue and the exciting future of integrated community resources. Warmly, Kristi Nordgren." Then there were a couple forms that came in that I think Linda you sent to me from Patricia Briggs and Gloria Jenkins to move the council, the library to the Willamson property. That came in. We have Kathy Shaw. "Please vote to relocate the library to the Willamson House and expand Buellton Singer Center to where the library is located now. Sincerely, Catherine Shaw." Joan Watts. "Dear city council, at your meeting this evening, the Willamson property will be decided as to how the cities will use the property. Please approve moving the library to this site. The parking at the current library site is not adequate. The Willamson property would make beautiful places, a beautiful place for reading. Adequate parking could be created easily and would be an asset for the citizens of Buellton." And then, of course, if the library does move there, then the Singer Center could go into the vacant location. "Sincerely, Joan Watts." We've done the, so then we had the last one, which is off course. It's from Matthew Donahue. Sure, he's a nice guy. "What about Disc Golf Course on the grounds surrounding the Willamson property?" Disc Golf. Linda, we had two or three more that came in after these were printed. Would you be able to read those?
Sure, I can. I think there might have been two more that might have been missed. Tell me if I'm wrong. Lynn Johnson?
I thought I read that one.
You thought you did? Okay, Carol Sherline?
I read that one.
Okay.
I think I read Carol's.
Did you?
I'll go back and double-check. I know I had it.
Yeah, I think you had it, but I didn't.
Okay.
I just got another one. They're still coming in.
I know.
Okay, yeah, check on Lynn Johnson and Carol Sherline. I'll read the others.
I've got, I did Lynn Johnson's. I remember that one. I'll go look for Carol Sherline's if you will start reading the other ones, and, thank you.
Okay, so this first one is from Larry Adams. "Please approve the proposal to move the Buellton Library over to the Willamson House and allow the Singer Center to expand into the existing library space. I think it would also be a good idea to allow groups to rent the barn at the Willamson property as long as you keep the occupancy at a reasonable level in consideration of the neighborhood. Would be a great place to have a wedding, reception, family gathering, and also boost the Buellton revenues. Thank you, Larry Adams, Ranch Club Estate resident." Okay, and then, next one. This is from Lori Oakley. "Hello, I would like to encourage the city to vote on moving the public library to the Willamson property and extend the Buellton Singer Center into the currently, current library location." Thank you, Lori Oakley. And one just came in from Spencer Dix and honorable mayor and council members. "As a resident of Buellton, I believe it would serve the community well to move the city library to the Willamson House and the Singer Center to the current library building." Thank you, Spencer Dix. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Then I will read Carol Sherline's real quick. "The Buellton Singer Center does a lot for singers and low-income families of Buellton, and they have outgrown their location. They're now serving around 300 meals a day, not be able to continue card games, bingo games, in-house meals, monthly dinners, activities due to shortage of space. The center's been the center of activities for many singers over the years. I encourage you to vote to move the library to the Willamson House and the Buellton Singer Center into the library location." That was Carol Sherline. And I'll reread Lynn Johnson's real quick. "I respectfully request that the council support moving the Buellton Library to the Willamson property. This would be a tremendous benefit to the Buellton community. The ability of the Buellton Singer Center would be able to expand into the current library space and would benefit the entire community." That's from Lynn Johnson. I think we got everybody? I hope we got everybody. If we didn't, you all know where to get a hold of me and let me know that I messed up, if I messed up. But is there any other public comment?
I don't have any other public comment.
Then I am closing public comment, bringing it back to the council for discussion. Counsel!
I would like to see a use that generates revenue. So I'm not in favor of moving the library to the Willamson property. I think it stunts our, it stunts the potential that the city can gain from the property by putting something in there that limits our use in that way.
Okay. We had, we gave the Galida, Allison Gray, the head of the Galida Library, who we contr- who we contracted with, a tour of the facility. And she said, this was maybe six months ago when we were talking about different ideas. She said, that would be really nice and we're probably going to need more staffing. And the city manager and I looked at each other and went, oh, no, 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 no. So what my thought was, was that we would use the front of the property and we could rent out the back rooms for computers, for video, you know, filmmaking projects. People could teach classes or rent the spaces in the back of the room. You're right, the library is not a profit-making venture. Eventually, what I would really like to see is City Hall moving to Avenue of Flags along with council chambers, along with the library. We're probably a few years away from that. So in the meantime, I, I just think, I do have to admit, I am a friend of the Buellton library and I am on their board. And I truly believe that our library could provide, it does provide a lot of services. It could provide so much more. So that's why I thought about the front part of the house and leaving two or three of the back rooms open that could be rented out.
I still think it limits our capabilities and I feel very strongly about finding a City Hall-type area. And I would prefer to move everything at that time rather than move and then move and then move, especially considering, I'm sure there's going to be retrofitting that would be required in order to have new occupants in the building, in the Willamston property. I would prefer, I would, I just would prefer to leave the city departments where they are and try to make use of the property in a way that might be more commercial and more revenue-based rather than, to me, it seems like a temporary fit to move the library there with the intention of moving it again when we get to that point.
Yeah, we just.
And also, I know that we're supposed to be very careful about what we're talking about, but I feel that a lot of the push, and I may be wrong, but I do feel that a lot of the push to move the library to that space is not necessarily just focused on the library. And I.
You think it might have to do with the senior center?
I was trying not to say it, but I think that there are.
You think?
I think that there are other solutions because the senior center provides such a necessary valuable service that we shouldn't not address it, but I don't necessarily think that this needs to be that solution. I don't think moving the library with the ulterior motive, so to speak, for the second organization is the way to do it.
I have to tell you, when I, when I, when we purchased the property and we're going through it, one of the first things that came to my mind was the library. Not the senior center, but the library. And then, I think I mentioned it to Pam once and she said, that would be great because then we have a spot. So I, I see where you're coming from, but I just, I don't think that the Quonset hut that our library is in is providing what it can to our residents.
Is this a Quonset hut?
It is.
It's an old barracks. It's not actually technically a Quonset hut.
Is it part of it, too?
Yes.
Yes.
This was, this was the commanding officer's room.
Camp Cook's, yeah. This is, this is the.
While we're discussing moving.
Yeah, John, what, what are your thoughts?
My bright idea was to move the library in here and we can go do our city council wherever we come up with. We could do it at the barn. We could do it in the house if that's the case. But I was, I asked Scott today about the footage, whether it's close, if it's not close.
The, it's, it's probably close if we included the children's library along with this as well. It's probably pretty close. I, I don't have exact numbers on it, but it's, it's close.
So no expansion? It wouldn't make it.
Well, if you just swapped out the, the current library location for the council chambers and left the children's library. It's close, but it, I don't think the room is quite as long. It would be configured differently. And there may be some.
Little narrower and longer over there.
There is a hallway, a storage area.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can take that storage, yeah. The other thing was if we did move the library and made the decision for the library to go in the house, how much of that, of it, would it, would it be completely 100% only for a library? Or would we be able to set it to where there would be community space? And then like a lockdown part for locking up the books? But then some of the reading areas could become part of the event areas on the weekends? It's just an idea. I would like, because we have a garage there, too, that I think if you threw a couple of windows in and two shelves in there, there's a lot of room. If that was, if it was to split the house, so we'd have both, both, please, please, both sides.
Right.
And then maybe even a little bit of a patio or something that we could use for the house. And then the other house we have for commercial, for weddings, for meetings, for whatever. But that's just something I think we should study.
One of the comments I got was to put the library into the back half of the house using the garage as part of it, but I'm.
And all day long, they could go read books in the li, in the front and all whatever, use it the whole, all the way to the, wherever they want to read and.
When we were looking at it, I, I thought of the main living room. The kitchen would be the checkout area and then the master bedroom. And that would pretty much be it. That would still give them a larger space and keep the back half of the house open.
You'd have to retrofit that whole kitchen.
It's going to have to be retrofitted anyway. I mean, the carpet is old white.
Retrofitting and then updating. Like, we could update the carpets, we could update the flooring, we could, but the kitchen would still exist for commercial purposes. Whereas if, if I understand correctly what you're saying, if the library goes in there, the kitchen's gone. That takes away some of the commercial use, no?
We could also use a mutual bathroom. If it had to be approved, then it would be a bathroom that we could use on the weekends for events. And then it's just something I think we should consider.
Okay, Councilman King. Any, any thoughts?
Oh, you know I always have thoughts.
I know.
Scott, I think I got kicked out of Zoom. It says connecting.
I hate when that happens.
Picture's a lot weird.
I'm at 15%, so.
Would you? Uh-oh. Would you like some juice?
Yeah, you're going to lose me in about 10 minutes.
Your computer's on.
Zoom?
No, of course not.
Is there a.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I'm still on, so I'm good for that.
Always thinking ahead.
Vices to be off as well.
It says connecting.
Somebody's feeding back.
Thank you so much.
You might lost your signal. Wink it up.
Oh, we're connecting. It's not.
It says connecting.
Yeah, mine said the same.
You're about to go on the floor.
Sorry. Didn't mean to throw a wrench in things.
That's okay.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear.
It don't count for anything, Linda.
Yeah, I think I am.
Are you back in?
I think that'll bring it up if it's.
We're taking a really quick break to hook everybody back up again.
My computer just decided to have a mind of its own.
Who's been messing with my pictures?
I know, but it gives you more time to formulate your entire.
Oh, I've been formulating these since we bought the property a year ago.
Okay. All right. Well, I've.
I'm anxious to. Andrea Keever, no video, Linda Reed.
Yeah, I know, mine is like just spinning the wheel of death.
Are you, are you logged in?
I logged out and now I'm trying to log back in, but it won't even load.
But are you hooked up with the City of Buellton?
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm. My internet's all good.
Okay. Shall we take a?
I was going to say, we can take a break. The other thing you have closed. We can take a break. The other thing, you have closed public comment. Council's begun deliberations.
Yes.
You can put this over to the next meeting, again, having already taken public comment, and go straight into council deliberations at your next meeting, if that's your wish. And if, frankly, if we can't get this back up, then we'll have to do that.
Mr. Murphy?
I vote for that.
Let's just take a five, five-minute break and if it doesn't come back up, or.
That's certainly within your authority.
Comment.
Pardon?
I have like a one-minute comment.
I just, I.
Well, but I think we have to vote on this. We have to make a decision or we have to put it over.
We've been dragging this on for so long. I hate to put it off anymore.
But I have some questions for council anyway, but we may have to be sidebarred on that.
So we can, we can take a break, but if we don't get them back up, the audio is still working and broadcasting fine, so we can, we can continue the meeting with audio only for those who don't have it. You'll still, you'll still be heard over, as long as you speak into the microphone.
Okay, so let's take a five-minute and see if we can get everything up. And if we can't, then we'll, we'll continue with questions and if.
We're still, Victor's, so we're still streaming on here.
Right, right. Which is why they can hear us. So we're taking a quick. that you've been putting together since we purchased the property.
Yeah. Am I, you can't see my video, can you? I'm off.
Um, you're off, that's correct.
Can you hear my audio?
Yes, you should be.
You don't have to comb your hair.
Oh, perfect. So I suspect that Pandora uttered some expletives when she opened up the box. Kind of what this piece of property has been. I agree with Councilmember Lewis that I, I think it would be a disservice to the 5,127 people in this town that did not send a letter for a quid pro quo. I think, I think there's been a couple of good ideas for this piece of property. I think that, looking at the perspective of what Alicia was saying or Councilmember Lewis was saying, is that the front half realistically could be maintained as a revenue generator. You could, it's obviously going to take a little bit of money on our part to maybe make, to, to bifurcate the building. It's 3,700 feet. Well, I think that's probably more than the Zaca Creek people have at this juncture. They probably don't have a 3,700-foot structure. You could divide that in half and have 1,500 or more. Plus, you have in the front half a revenue generator for the people that paid for that piece of property. And I've always been an advocate of that, is that we do not cave in to a select few of people that say, hey, we want this, but we don't want to pay for it. Hey, we want that, but we don't want to pay for it. Hey, we want this, but we don't want to pay for it. Well, that's, that's a disservice to the people that paid the taxes for this piece of property. So I think if we're going to look specifically at, no, I'm not leaving the meeting. As, as look at that, do we have to do it today? No, we could look at, you know, how that could be, because we're all going to have to go back and look at that piece of property again, because all of us just kind of took a quick look through there and said, oh, yeah, it looks great, you know, well, it was a house. But you, I think we need to go back there before we make a decision on that piece of property and look at it critically and go, look, you can use this part for this, you can use that part for this. It will still generate revenue. It will meet the needs of different people that want to use that piece of property. Additionally, and we can't discuss it now, but I have an idea of council chambers could move to the second story of the barn with some modifications. You would have to put in obviously a lift. You would have to put in obviously a lift for ADU. It's not an elevator, it's just a lift. A lift is a lot less expensive than you'd have to put in for an elevator. To me, comply with ADU, correct me if I'm wrong, counselor, you'd only have to put a lift in for someone that was disabled to get to the second story of that piece of property.
Is that when they pull themselves up?
No. Or we could put one of those little seats that goes up the stairs. A lift would be far less expensive than contracting, developing, and putting in an elevator, which we're not going to do.
But you are talking about the barn now.
The barn. Now, council chambers, this is just when we're going to talk about what we're going to do with the barn. We're going to talk about what we could do, you know, other pieces of that property. The needs of the senior center could be facilitated by this room right here. Instead of moving all those books over there, and like Alicia said, at some point, we say we put in a whole facility over on Avenue Flanks, then you got to move the library all over there again. I mean, I think that's a lot of, you know, make-work. So, in, and I think John was looking at trying to get some revenue out of this property as well, because if the way that's written on all these letters that people have written to us, that we moved the library over there, and then we moved the senior center over there, well, where's the revenue for that piece of property we bought for the people in this city? So I think that, this is just my opinion, rather than us making a decision right now, since what council has told us is that we've already had public comment on this, and it's all up to us, is I think in the future, it could be even in the meeting two weeks from now, will give us all the opportunity to go over and take a look at that piece of property, and then go, "Yeah, all the conversation that we had here, yeah, okay, now I could see this doing that, and I could see that doing this." And like John said, use the back half or whatever, and with the minor modifications of a couple of windows, maybe even take the garage door completely out of that house. There's your Zaca, right there. You know, there's your, there's your Zaca preschool on the back half of the house. And it's, like we just said, it's more space than they have now. And then you have the other half that generates revenue.
The preschool concerns me because they want to double the size of the preschool, and I'm not sure that that fits in with the neighborhood.
Well, I wanted to be a fighter pilot, but I never was. You know, just because somebody wants something, that doesn't mean that they're going to double their, the amount of the kids that they could have in that property, but you, it's more than what you have now. You see what I mean?
I do.
I mean, you know, you could say, "Hey, we're willing to bend a little bit, and, you know, you could use the back half of the property. We could put up, you know, walls between that with doors, and it probably would be a simple fix." But I think that all of us need to go in there, take a look at that house before we make any kind of a decision that is a long-term decision for that house.
Thank you. Councilman Andressi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say, predicate by what I've heard tonight, I appreciate Alicia's position, the way she described it when she spoke. So that kind of pushed me forward with this comment. I'm curious slash wondering what the existing homeowners in and around Valley Dairy, and how they react slash feel about traffic noise and hustle-bustle in close proximity to their neighborhood. We're basically changing the utilization. The suggestions are that we change the utilization of Valley Dairy neighbors. They're very proud, they have a single-story, most case, I don't think there's any two stories in it. All single-story, all walking, all working, they've had their own little workshops. And we're going to put a lot more facility in their neighborhood. And that, I'm just, want to be sure that they, I just don't know. It seems like we're changing the use of the property that they bought, and maybe telling them, "They've been here long enough, we've made a decision, and you need to just move on." So, I'm, I think property rights are fragile, and I, I think if I were a homeowner there, I would be, I would be very resentful to having other of these businesses come, and there are only one or two of them, but why not three more or four more? Because they need more money, so they got new ideas. Those, that's my position. Meaning, I don't think we need to build an economic center there. That's too small of an area for the kind of things that, I'd like to hear from the neighbors, I guess. The neighborhood, do they, do you people want?
We had two meetings there, and they are very concerned about noise and traffic.
Oh, well, what do you know?
Very much so.
Okay.
Well, I think during those meetings too, to address your concerns, we did discuss the possibility and the plausibility of creating alternative approaches and alternative parking areas.
Down below.
Correct. And I don't think that it is prohibitive for us to mitigate the impact to the community, which I think is important on us to do so and to consider that, while still making sure that we generate revenue for the city of Buellton and the residents who, like you said, paid for the property and deserve to see a little bit of a sound.
So segue my comment then in what you just said, the property. These are people's homes, though, and we're talking a business, we're talking about a business decision versus living conditions or quaintness of the neighborhood you bought into.
I think the only way to maintain that would be to not change the character of the property, which would mean, maintain a residential character, which would mean that the only option that we really have is to lease it as a residential property, which I don't think has been one of the items considered. Otherwise, everything we've considered, from the library to the preschool to everything, it's all commercial. Or, you know, city. Nothing, none of the options that are before us right now maintain the character of a residential, you know.
And that's where my red light went on. Whoa, what are, what are we, what are we conditioning or condoning?
So, the, what I'm getting from council is that they want to wait until the next meeting so that they have a chance to go back, walk through the house, consider all the letters from the residents, and all the input we've had from our meetings at the Willamson Barn with the local residents, and be ready to come back in two weeks with a more definitive action.
I feel comfortable with that, yeah.
Was us vacating this room part of the, our discussion?
No, that-
No!
Are you angry?
Unless vacating this room to do a council chamber in the house, that could be part of this action. With respect to the barn, what Councilmember King said, what you said, sir, about other locations and the potential senior center sort of into here, is ancillary, it's some background, but the decision is going to be strictly on the house, because the house was what was agendized.
And is it possible, I know that we can't, I don't think, all look at the house together, because doesn't that constitute a meeting if we all look at it together? Can we try to go in maybe a couple of groups, so we can like look at it together? Groups of two, right?
Two councilmen.
Okay, okay.
Then you can't talk to the other ones.
Oh, right, right, right.
Just like we did with the other properties that we bought.
Right, right.
Two of us can go there, and the rest of us have to keep moms.
And I'll be happy to take council members either individually or in groups of two, however you'd like to do it, and walk through the property, we'll just, we'll work that out.
Yeah, just because sometimes it's nice to have another person like-
For the feedback.
Right, and to remind you, like, remember we said this, or remember this came up? Just because it's, I don't know, I feel like it's helpful to have a sounding board.
Always good.
Could we bring some more people with us? We wanted to discuss it.
Oh, I have, I have taken any resident who wants to see the property. City manager's been very good at letting me borrow the key to the property, and we've done that quite a few times. So if there's anybody that you would like to see, take a tour of the property, that's-
I would only ask that when you do your two council members with the city manager, that on those trips, you don't have members of the public, because that might come off to other members of the public as though you were favoring the people who were with you. So as the mayor said, take anybody you want, go individually with members of the public and the city manager, but when you go in your groups of two, or to have the city manager brief you on things or answer questions, it would be best to not have the public with you then, just for that reason of transparency.
Alrighty.
That mayor, I can make a motion.
I don't know that we need a motion to put it off until the next meeting.
I believe, actually, Madam Mayor, normally we would not, but I believe that executive order N2920 would-
Oh, show-off.
I was thinking the same thing, like, damn. Did you make that up?
Would, would prefer to have the motion, in particular, because we're verbal right now for at least some of our council members, so, yes.
Councilmember King?
I would like to move that we move this item to the next regular city council meeting for final decision after council members have had the opportunity to observe said house on Willamson property.
I second that motion.
Alrighty, Linda?
Okay, Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Andressi.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor Searle.
Aye. Thank you all for hanging in with us. City manager?
All right. I have a question, I'm sorry. If we were going to discuss the senior center, would that have to be agendized?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Yes, it would.
Okay.
City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Just a couple items, or three items for you this evening. The first one is just an informational item. As I advised the city council a couple of months ago, the American Rescue Plan Act, which is a federal COVID relief effort aimed at, with a, with a, a component of it aimed at local governments, is getting ready to send out our first of two checks to the city. As it turns out, it looks like the amount of money that's been allocated to the city has grown since the last time, from about $960,000 to about $1.2 million. That would be split up over, over two payments, one this year, one next year. In order for that money to reach the city, the city needs to file a funding application by June 23rd. The typical way we would do that would be to have the city council authorize the filing of that application. However, there is not time to get that funding application on an agenda prior to the deadline. At this point, I would suggest that the mayor and I go ahead and sign that funding application and get that in, so that the city is at least eligible to receive those funds. There are requirements that need to be met by the city. There are federal requirements tied to those funds. Should the city council decide at the time those funds are received that those, the requirements that need to be met are not acceptable to the city, those funds can simply be returned. However, if we don't get the application in on time, we will not get those funds. They're pretty substantial, and so in light of the deadline and our lack of a meeting in between now and then, I would suggest that the mayor and I just sign that and get that, get that moving. So without objection, we'll go ahead and do that.
And just for the record, to back up the city manager on this, most cities are simply having the city manager handle it and have the mayor sign where appropriate. It's been Buellton's practice to bring it to the council, so that you can fully understand what's being done before the money is sought. But the city manager and mayor are not seeking to usurp the council authority. The time for council action is deciding which projects will be funded, whether the total amount will be used, whether the total amount would be returned because the federal government's conditions on the funds are such that you don't want to use them. So you will still have all of the same authority you would have, we're just deviating from a practice rather than a legal requirement for the purpose of making sure that you don't lose out on the potential money. So he did run that by me. It is perfectly legal for this to happen, and as I said, is something that other cities I work with are doing as a matter of course, because they haven't followed your practice in the past.
Madam Mayor, could I reiterate the number? Was it from $960,000 to $1.2 million?
That's correct.
Madam Mayor, what, what are the terms and conditions of that fund?
The actual conditions with, with, you know, in comparison to typical federal grants, are very, very loose. The city has wide discretion as to how to use those funds, and very little reporting requirements other than how those funds are to be used, or how those funds have been used. There are a few categories where, that those funds cannot be used for, one of which, probably the most prominent of which is, those funds cannot be used to, to address pension debt. However, they can be used for pretty much anything, direct or indirect, that, directly or indirectly related to the pandemic. So if the city were to look at this and say, gee, our revenues in a particular category didn't come in as high as they would have prior to, you could simply backfill those revenues with those monies. Or you could pick out specific projects. But I don't think it will be terribly difficult to meet the federal requirements and to use all of the money that's being offered, given the fact that the impacts to Buellton and its economy have been as severe as they have.
Okay, sign away.
All right, the next item on the agenda, or on my report here, as the city council is probably aware, June 15th, the governor's blueprint for a safe economy, the response to the pandemic. The tier system will be lifted. Currently, we are now in the, yes, in the yellow tier. However, the tier system will be lifted on, on June 15th. That does not mean that all restrictions will go away, but most of them will, particularly with regard to business. There will be some additional or some restrictions remaining. We don't know exactly what those are yet. I expect a full list of those restrictions to come out sometime in the next few days. And then the county is, is preparing to issue an order in advance of the June 15th to mirror the state's order, so that at 12:01 a.m. on June 15th, all those restrictions are lifted. I will make the council aware of pertinent restrictions that will remain as we move forward. Related to that, City Hall will plan to reopen to the public in phases, beginning on June 15th. And I say in phases, because there are a number of considerations, particularly with regard to some of our staff and health issues there, and then whatever restrictions still remain with the, with the California Department of Health orders that come down, particularly with regard to masking. So on June 15th, City Hall will open again to the public, but masks will be required in public areas and common areas within City Hall. So, at least for the initial phase, until we hear back from, something different from Sacramento. So with that, I'll conclude my manager's report for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions the council has.
And any private business, even though masks may be lifted, any private business can still ask that their customers wear masks.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, that doesn't-
And there may be some requirements that, that there may be some requirements coming from Sacramento that would actually require that in some instances, particularly grocery stores and things like that.
I've heard transit, if you're on a bus, and-
Public transit, yeah. But generally speaking, offices, retail stores and the like would not have that restriction. At least that's the anticipation. We'll see when the, when the guidelines come out here in the next few days.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Any questions for the city manager? Alrighty, well with that, it's 8:59. Anything from you, Mr. Murphy? It's always a pleasure to see you.
You've heard me way too much tonight.
It's nice to have you back. Alrighty, just short of nine o'clock, I hereby adjourn this meeting. We will meet back in council chambers on June 24th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you very much.
Nice job.
Nice job.
Holy moly.